Harding. Jarom.
Here.
Melton.
I'm here.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing today for our invocation by Councilmember Chris Jarom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, not seeing my colleagues here reminds me of the saying that my law partner, Mike Kelly, would say when his dad was a pitcher for the Omaha Division of the St. Louis Cardinals, you had to come early to see Kelly pitch. So, if you want to hear me talk, you gotta come early, I guess. On a serious note, we had two really violent crimes seemingly in District Three in the last couple of days, one in Park Avenue in Pacific and one last night, a double shooting at Pierce, at 25th and Pierce. So, my thoughts are hopefully this isn't a trend, it's something, it's an anomaly, just a coincidence, and that the people responsible can be brought to justice as soon as possible and the victims can begin the healing process. So, let's hope that things in District Three aren't on a bad trend here.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today, and as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for Benny Row located northeast of 67th Avenue and Benny Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from R. 435 District, high density to R. 4 District. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Benny Row. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Benny Row. Item nine, a resolution to approve the Benny Row subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items number six through nine are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. We talked about this item briefly at pre-council. What we have, I think, is a subdivision of property that would establish three new single-family homes right next to Benson West Elementary School, which I think is a positive. I just wanted to confirm with the planning director if he's had a chance to look into my question about any concerns for drainage that I think were expressed during the planning board proceedings that would flow downhill to the north there. Mr. Fanslaw.
Sure, yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Yeah, it was, it was back in June that this case was in front of the planning board, and there was some conversation about just that subject, councilman, and the city assured the concerned property owner that at the time of building permit, we would be taking a look at stormwater runoff, and the engineer who represents the applicant is also committed to making sure that it doesn't pose a problem for the concerned citizen.
Okay, and obviously that would be confirmed prior to any kind of building permits being issued.
Correct.
All right, thank you. With that, a motion to approve.
Seconded to approve items six through nine, there are no more further lights roll call.
Harding. Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through nine are approved, seven to zero. Items 10 and 11 relate to the same project and can be considered together for property located northwest of 204th Street and George B. Lake Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow assisted living in an R. 5 Urban Family Residential District at this location, B is communication and opposition. Item 11, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers, numbers 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
My name is Eric Williams with Olson, who are the civil engineering firm, or civil engineering firm on the project, so let me know if there's any questions or any items that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 10 and 11, there are no lights roll call.
Harding. Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
10 and 11 are approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Chance Ridge Event Center located at 508 North Skyline Drive, A is communication and opposition, B is documentation received at the January 8th, 2019 city council meeting.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Robert Peterson. I'm an attorney with Peterson and Foster Law, and I represent the applicant. After last week's meeting, or hearing, I and the applicant had an opportunity to visit with some of the neighbors. To summarize the complaints that we saw that was submitted last week, and visiting with them, I'm going to kind of summarize all of what we talked about. Noise, intrusion onto their property, trash, police calls, false alarms, and anticipated traffic issues, if this license is issued. So, my client has agreed after those conversations to install a solid wood fence on the north side of this property, not less than six feet tall, and it's a privacy fence, so there will be no gaps between it. And we've proposed this so it would eliminate any opportunity for people to be intruding into the neighbor's property, and there was also an issue about trash. We feel this going to be sufficient to control all the trash on our property. With regard to the noise complaint, the incidents report that Mr. Maine gave you last week shows the last report for noise there was December 27th, 2014. And as I told you last week, we had a problem some time back. We have some different people, younger people, that's taken over the management of this, and as part of that, we've required uniform security to be there at all of these events. And they have done their job. In addition to that, the doors are being opened, our security is requiring that those doors be closed. And as the documents indicate, the last complaint that was called in on noise was in 2014. It was also talked about false alarms. So I contacted the City Falls Fire Alarm Office for the calls, and this is the history I was given. March 18, 2010, December 29, 2014, January 1, 2015, two calls, January 8, 2015, and February 18, 2018. Now, the four calls over the nine days from December 29, 2014, to January 8, 2015, were caused by a frost situation because our pole was too close to the concrete, so we've insulated that. The issue on February 18, 2018, we had a malfunction on our system. We had a connector, whatever it was. It was a false alarm. We did get fined, and we paid the fine, but we fixed the thing, and we haven't had a problem since. Police calls, after I receive what was submitted to you on the police calls, I contacted Rhonda Gustafson. She's at the Northwest Precinct to follow up on what those calls were about. She had no reports that she could give me, and she indicated that if there's not a crime, there's not criminal activity, there's not a report to give to you. So, if I can run down these calls, one was 2000, or February 16, 2018. Now, that happened at 7:41 a.m., and it was supposedly a false alarm. We don't have any record of that, but it was at 7:41 on a weekday, so it certainly had nothing to do with our liquor license. On February 18, 2018, that's the day we had the malfunction, I acknowledge that. There was a call on March 24, and that call was made by our security officer as two people were arguing about whoever ought to drive. That's the only instance when we were having any kind of an event at this facility, where we had a call. On April 5, there was a false alarm reported at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Now, the City of Omaha False Alarm Reduction Office had no record of it. On August 18, there was a call at 11:15 in the morning, and that apparently was because someone left a stolen trailer on our property. On September 22, a barrel racer was injured, and there was a, it was a rescue call. That summarizes the calls that was on that sheet that you got. One call related was in the evening, we were having an event. That's it. Traffic. The other complaint was that folks thought that issuing the license was going to increase traffic. Well, we've had a license there since 2005. There was never any traffic complaints made, and the parties who live, or who made this complaint, they live north on Skyline Drive, and if I could just give you a picture of the property I'm talking about. Somebody tell me how to turn that on. There we go. This is the facility here. In order for traffic to get to us, they come off Dodge, they have an exit off Dodge, they have an entrance on Dodge, both directions. There's no reason traffic would ever go up Skyline Drive. There's no reason to be there, and in order to do it, they have to go up Skyline Drive around the cemetery and down into the neighborhood. I mean, to say that there's going to be a traffic issue because of this, I mean, it makes no sense. I just want to summarize, the only thing that we've had that coincided with an event there where alcohol was served was one. And, you know, I'd answer any questions you have, but that's a synopsis of where we've been.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? That's right, we already had the public hearing.
Good afternoon, I'm Jeff Maine. I'm at 21605 Chancellor Road, about 500 feet behind the Chance Ridge Event Center. I'm not going to repeat what I talked to you guys about last week, but I would like to give you an update on some of the things that have occurred since then. One is, it looks like we did receive another letter from one of the neighbors, which is on, on file, on the agenda, opposing the license. The other thing that's occurred is Travis, one of the co-owners, and I met over coffee and for quite a long time, 45 minutes or so, if I recall, and then he gave me a tour of the center, so I was able to see where things were, where the doors were, where the fire alarms were. You know, it gives you a little better understanding of what we're really dealing with here. They, he told me that they agreed to put up a wooden privacy fence, which I agree would probably help with the trash and the trespassing. I think that's a great idea. And his attitude during our meeting and during the tour was just outstanding. We talked about us wanting to be good neighbors, and that's his intent, and that's our intent as well. The, the thing that he also described to me is that he wants to work on the noise problem with the parties, but I think both he and I, and all to speak for myself, I guess, is I'm still concerned that there'll be parties there late into the evening, or into the early morning, with loud music, and it just barrels through the valley there, and I'm still concerned about that. I don't know how you can have an amplified band and bass guitars in that type of a building and not have that sound come out to the point where it actually comes into your house and you can't sleep at night. So, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm okay with the liquor license, but I'm not okay with the things that, with the noise. And so, if there's some way to have an assurance, just like you would want that your neighbor is not blasting loud music into the neighborhood, I would like to see that somehow, and I don't know the mechanics of that. From what I hear from Mr. Smith, all sounds good, it sounds great, it sounds like he's being, wants to be a good neighbor. What assurance do I have, right, that, that the follow-through will be there? You know, I trust him, I think it will be, but what if it's not? Then where do we go, and what do we do? I don't know the answer to that question. So maybe that's where the council can help. The report that I gave you guys last week, that I got from the 911 facility, I asked for the noise reports, the report that I gave you shows there was a call on March 11, 2018. It says, I don't know what all the codes mean, but it says "a sign," general. Another one says suspicious, or suspicion, on September 19, 2015. Another says there was a party on June 20 of 2015. Another says there was a disturbance on May 16, 2015. And then the others beyond that were the ones that Mr. Peterson referenced, were specifically coded as noise. And I can assure you that my discussions with the neighbors and my experience living there for the last six and a half years, there's clearly been loud noises after 2014. I don't know why they're not on the record of the police calls, but honestly, what I found is most people don't call, they just deal with it, and they don't want to bother the police and, you know, wish they would have because we would have had a little better report on, you know, the frequency of those calls. So, I just want to reassure you that, there. I also want to tell you, I think that Travis, or Mr. Smith, is a super-nice guy, I think he's running that place right. He was very friendly to me, he was open to a lot of suggestions, he's already committed to do a number of different things. If that attitude and that effort and those things continue, I think we're going to be in good shape.
Okay.
So I'm standing here as an opponent, but I'm also saying, you know, I think if he does what he says he will do, and somehow we all, or you all, or whoever can make sure of that, then I think we're all going to be happy.
Thank you. The public hearing was last week, my fault that we kept going, but I'm glad both of you got a chance to talk. With that, Mr. Brink, Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm glad the parties were able to get together, and it sounds like they've got some of the issues addressed. We've got that on the record. One, one other stipulation I might want to add on is maybe that any live music stops at, or any music stops at midnight, and if I could have Mr. Peterson or Mr. Smith come up and just acknowledge that that's acceptable to include on the application.
Yes, we've discussed that, and I overlooked that. That is agreeable, we will terminate at midnight.
And we also might find that the, the wood fence actually helps some of the sound as well to, or muffle some of that, but, so with that, I will move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 12, no further lights. I may suggest to the, I may suggest as well that if, if people aren't calling, you need to encourage your neighbors to call, because that will give our committee information, and then if there's, if there's still loud noise issues, we can, we could bring them before the liquor committee, or the law committee, all right? All right, thank you. Moved and seconded to approve item 12, there are no further lights roll call.
Just to clarify, this is a motion to approve with the stipulation.
With the stipulation.
Okay.
Of 12 midnight, okay.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to consider a Class C K liquor license for two fine Irishmen located at 18101 R. Plaza, Suite 108, A is communication and opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Proponent Kyron O'Brien, 13974 Hickory Circle.
Proponent Josh Purcell, 17129 Emeline Street.
And you just here to answer any questions we might have?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 13, no lights roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 14, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for a local beer patio and kitchen located at 1207 Cast Street, Suite CH.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 18 were held on January 8, 2019. Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 18 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 19 through 26 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Kevin Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff with the mayor's office, here to speak as a proponent for agenda item number 26. I'll make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Seeing no others, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
In regards to number 26, you know, I had gotten an email from somebody saying that they would rather the $50,000 go for road improvements and filling potholes and other essential city services. So, I just kind of wanted to be clear that this is money coming out of the Keno Fund, and by law, by statute, we're required to use money from the Keno Fund for community programs, for community betterment. And so this was something, actually, that the, the mayor and I had met with RJ Berry from Albuquerque, New Mexico, at a, at a conference. I was giving, I was actually giving a presentation to a group of mayors and some city council members on panhandling and the ordinance, the ordinances, and what you can pass and what you can't pass based upon prior case law, and gave examples of our, of our, what we had done in, in Omaha. And I had come across this, this program that the mayor of Albuquerque had started, and he happened to be at the conference. So I asked him actually to give a mini presentation during my presentation in regards to this program. And Mayor Stothart was there, and we ended up meeting with Mayor Berry afterwards, and we thought this, you know, this might be something that, that could work here in Omaha. Albuquerque's about the same size as, as Omaha, for really a very small amount of money that's coming from the Keno Fund, the Salvation Army agreed to be our partner in this. And I know we receive complaints all the time, why don't you ban panhandling, and why don't you do something about, about people standing on the, on the medians? Well, we've done as much as we can possibly do, but maybe we need to get to the root of the issue of maybe why, why the panhandlers are standing on the corner. And you see that, a lot of them say, well, work for food, or need food, and, and that's what they need. And they may not be at a point where they can go to a heartland workforce right now and get a full-time job. They're kind of in, maybe potentially, an in-between. This, this is a way that we can help those who are, who want some immediate work, who need food maybe tonight for their family. So instead of going in and disrupting traffic on, you know, the medians at 72nd Dodge, you know, we have a program that can maybe help them, and then through this program, the Salvation Army can make contact and maybe help them to the next step, or figure out what their other needs may be. But this is kind of that immediate need, so kind of a pilot that, that's just being started, but I'm, I'm in complete support, and a number of other cities around the nation have, have done something similar. Oklahoma City, I believe, Tulsa was another one. So I, you know, I support this if, you know, if in a year we can reevaluate it, see, see how it goes, but I do know Salvation, if we're going to partner with somebody, Salvation Army is a, is a great partner, they do great work, and they, they use the money for very little administrative expenses. And I, you know, they're very good about the, the money that they get using it to truly help those that, that they're intending to help. So, with that, I support number 26, and I guess I'll leave any questions up to other council members.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also on item 26, I had some questions, and I just wanted to let everybody know that when we talk about investing in the city, and this is exactly what this description of this program is, a way to work, this is how we should do it. I mean, the money is coming from the Keno Fund. I'd like to thank the Salvation Army for being a part of this, because when we talk about the people in the city who need jobs, especially the city who are most at risk, you got to have that first step, and, and this is how you do it. I'm excited that, after talking with director bench, of these, hopefully, future of city of Omaha employees, to, to start them out as a temp position, and hopefully they work out, maybe not all of them will, but those that can, we, we can create that pipeline for more jobs and obviously a better quality life for these people, and obviously thanking Mayor Stothart as well for following through on this. I know this came about when we had the discussion about the panhandling, so I appreciate all three of them and their efforts in this step forward for something that's very important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Mr. President, and I too need to thank some people. I need to thank those very smart state senators who said the lottery money should be used for issues such as this. This is a smart group, a smart group of people down there. No, 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 no. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, there's been a motion to approve.
That motion has been rejected.
He made a motion to approve. You want to second it? Moved and seconded to approve items, what are they again? 19 through 26, there are no further lights roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 through 26 are approved, seven to zero. Item 27, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, Group 2019-01, A is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Is there a motion?
The amendment.
Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 28, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal, Group 2019-02, A is communication and opposition, B is documentation received during the January 8, 2019 city council meeting, C is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Move C.
Second.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 29, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Douglas at 44 LLC for the 44 Douglas Student Housing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 4412-4418 Douglas Street and 114-120 South 44th Street in Mount Up Two, $2,173,800.
Public hearing on agenda item number 29 is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Matt Dwyer, 3814 Farnham Street. I'm just here on behalf of the Ownership and Development Group, here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 30, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with the 420 condominium regime for the 420 condominium regime tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at 420 South 11th Street in Mount Up Two, $685,682. gunshot location system for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number 31 is today. Proponents, please.
Public hearing on agenda item number 32, an ordinance to accept the bid and approve a lease agreement with Dillon Brothers Harley-Davidson Inc. for 16 Harley-Davidson motorcycles for used by the Omaha Police Department over a six-year period.
Public hearing on agenda item number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
John Sokolak, Omaha Police Department. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Kendra Ringenberg, 1318 North 187th. I'm here on behalf of the developer if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?